Roll call. Councilman Bodie.
Present.
Councilman Benton.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Misselli.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Yeah.
Fire Chief St. Seer. City Attorney Bures.
Present.
City CPA Linda Lulu.
Present.
And Municipal Clerk Nicole Lee.
Present.
I have a few announcements tonight. I'd like to thank Entergy, its employees and shareholders for their dedication to giving back to the communities across the state of Louisiana. Together, they have raised and personally donated to a program called Power to Care, which is a program that provides emergency assistance to the elderly and disabled to help them pay their utility bills. They have raised almost a million dollars to be used across our state. Residents in Harrahann have benefited from this program. The program is run through senior centers across the state of Louisiana. If anyone knows of anyone in need, elderly or disabled, who may qualify for this assistance, please contact Lynn Corrages at the Harrahann Senior Center. That phone number is 737-3810. You can always contact City Hall and we'll be happy to put you in contact with the senior center as well. We also have some good news for the city. On June 20th, 2017, the city received a Governor's Office of Homeland Security grant for pre-disaster mitigation in the amount of $522,000 with a non-federal share of $174,000, for a total amount of $696,000 to the city of Harrahann. This will allow us to storm-proof municipal buildings against wind damage. So that is a big windfall for the city. So that's really good news. If everyone has noticed from the agenda, you'll see many ordinances for first reading tonight that pertain to the budget. These budget amendments primarily are due to changes in operations, the necessity to fund important line items for a complete year, and to adopt the correct fund balances identified from the audit. There are, there will be multiple budget ordinances for first reading. I ask the public to pay attention to publications, to the website, et cetera, for, to examine these ordinances. I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda, to add nominations for the Police Advisory Committee as number six under New Business.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. The agenda is now amended. I was also asked by council if we could have a motion to amend the agenda, to have Calvin Hotmire present number three under Special Presentations. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes and an amendment is, the agenda is amended. Special Presentations. On July 15th, this year, this, just recently, Royland Playground experienced a bit of a facelift due to the efforts of NOLA Church, which is located in the Elmwood Business District. Darlene Schwartz is going to be coming up under Special Presentations to give us some more details about this wonderful community event and what they did for our community. We'd like to recognize those who have given of their time and their treasure. Darlene?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of Harrahann. We have a few announcements tonight, and I again will try to be brief. First, to touch on what the mayor just mentioned. So Saturday, July 15th, we had an organization called NOLA Church that volunteered to come out. They've kind of adopted the city of Harrahann, basically. They axed, they reached out to Councilman Wheeler, who came up with the idea for Royland Park. She appointed the organization in the direction of the mayor, and after we had a few discussions with them, we went with Royland Park. They came out on a Saturday from around nine o'clock in the morning to two o'clock in the afternoon and did a really good job of providing the park a facelift. They've also agreed, after discussion with the mayor, to adopt this park and to continue to come out monthly to keep the park up. They wire brushed the slides and the picnic tables and the wooden area that was full of staples that people had attached all sorts of billboards to and never removed the staples. They did a phenomenal job of removing all that painting, just a tremendous job of hauling trash away, and it looks a lot better. There's still more work to be done and, but it was really nice that this organization, NOLA Church, came out. They had about 40 members with their kids. They did inflatables for the kids. Councilman Wheeler was nice enough to help provide food. The mayor provided pizza, and you would have seen both the mayor and Councilman Wheeler in action with paintbrushes and wire brushes and doing all sorts of really hefty work at this event. I want to personally thank you guys for coming out, doing it. It was really great. And anybody that wants to be a part of any of this stuff, just give us a call and let us know, because we really do want to start doing some community stuff and making Harrahann the way it really should be.
And next month, the organization?
Next month, we're going to do a presentation of a couple plaques to the pastor and the directors of this organization, NOLA Church and NOLA Serve. And we would appreciate a nice round of applause when we do that next month. So, thank you for that. Go along with that. It required the necessity, the accessories to do the job. I'm sure Ms. Elaine Bankston, that's at Louise River Ridge Hardware Store, anybody that's done any work or stuff, she's a really sweet lady, lovely person. She provided almost $300 worth of materials to us for nothing. I mean, out of the greatness of her heart. She's a shy lady. I asked her to be here tonight. She couldn't make it, but I would like to just show the plaque that we had made for her and would like to read it right quick to everyone. It says, "Presented to Elaine Bankston, Louise River Ridge Ace Hardware," with the city emblem. It says, "With our sincere appreciation for your generosity and support of the community of Harrahann, your involvement makes a very positive impact on all of our citizens. Mayor Tina Misselli, July 27, 2017." Wonderful lady, wonderful place, and we do appreciate her doing that. Moving on here, right quick, let's see where I'm at. I'm really well organized, you can tell this evening. Okay. Spaghetti dinner benefiting the Metairie Humane Shelter. Going to be at the Knights of Columbus, 375 Oak Avenue in Harrahann, coming up August 12th, Saturday, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. $10 a plate, spaghetti, two meatballs with salad, bread, soft drinks. Desserts will be available for a dollar. If you want to go orders, they have a phone number. I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to make copies of this and kind of put them out in the lobby for anyone that'll be interested. Again, anyone that has pets or cares about pets, I think this would be a nice little event to support. So, again, Saturday, August 12th, over at the Knights of Columbus on Oak. And last, folks, we have a news release that came out from Jefferson Parish, and this does include the citizens of Harrahanns. Sometimes they include us, sometimes they don't. This has to do with the disposal of electronic waste. I'm not going to read all this, but the location at 400 David Drive, which is between Airline Drive and West Metairie, will accept electronic waste materials, okay? And it's things like cell phones, computer equipment, telephones, cables, inkjet cartridges. Items they will not accept is like televisions, computer screens, media, which is like tapes and CDs, floppy disks, light bulbs, fluorescent bulbs. I'm going to make copies of this also, but this is a good, safe way to get rid of some of this electronic junk that you don't want or need anymore. So, I'm going to make copies of some of this. We'll leave it out in the lobby at City Hall. If y'all have any questions, just give us a shout and we'll be happy to provide information on that. And I know I run over my time. I apologize, but thanks for everybody's attention. Sure appreciate it. Thanks.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, viewing audience, Tim Walker, Police Chief. Have quite a few things to go through tonight. A little bit about finance. I've been up here, I guess, eight or nine, 10 months, asking about our monthly financial report, which we've had a tough time receiving, for whatever reason. Just recently, audit came out. But prior to that, a couple of months ago, police department discovered they were about $161,490 under budget from 2016, were requested from the city council to take that money from last year and put it in our police department capital budget for 2017. Couple of weeks ago, found out the audit came out, and it had the police department, instead of being under budget, over budget, $66,638. Contacted one of the auditors, and the first thing that said, "We use the figures the city gave us." Well, our ordinance for budget is done, our budget is done by city ordinance, which is law. So I don't know why the auditors did not use the city ordinance. Our budget was a little over $2 million last year. So with that, staff and myself spent a whole day collecting documentation to send to both our city finance director, Ms. Lulu, and the city auditor, CRI, saying that something's wrong with this. The next day, they come back. Harrahann Police Department is under budget now, $91,927. Okay. The following day, Ms. Lulu, our city finance director, says, "Oh no, you're under budget, $75,621." This budget changes as much as the temperature does in one day. And the sad part about it, folks, is we, as taxpayers, are paying both the city finance director, $105 an hour, and I don't know what we pay in the city auditor per hour, probably close to $200 an hour, to correct this mistake. It's a waste of our money. Something needs to be done. This is ridiculous. Oh, it gets better. I've requested information from both Ms. Lulu, our city finance director, and the city auditor. How did you come about this? Well, I haven't received the documentation. They might say, "Well, they sent you to the ordinance," but they've never sent me the documentation that they used to complicate these figures. Give you an example.
This year's budget, I mean audit?
103 pages. It's like a novel, fiction novel, but a novel. I pulled past budgets from 2010, 38 pages. 2011, 37 pages. 2012, 37 pages. 2013, 38 pages. 2014, 40 pages. And in 2015, 53 pages. But we have an audit, 103, 103 pages with a lot of narrative. It's praising some elected officials and kind of downgrading some other elected officials. I've never seen that in an audit before. Supposed to be clean-cut above what the money is. I've made complaints to the CPA Board, for Licensing Board for Louisiana, against CRI, and also our city finance director. We've gone over the information from the budget that we have, going from $66,638 under budget, and we believe, I mean over, over budget, to $218,951 under budget for 2016. Big difference. We're not, we never got credit for our allocated insurance expense, allocated overhead. We had some grants for helmets, $6,000, didn't get credit for. Grant for ballistic vest, $1,000, we didn't get credit for. Had an auction last year, some of the equipment sold was police equipment. That was a little over $12,000, didn't get credit for that. In the budget, we had appearance bond fees that should have been given to the police department. That was $15,000 we didn't get. And in 2016, the city paid several employees that had left the police department their premiums to the tune of $9,500, but it was really over $21,000 over a year. So...
Wait, wait, Chief, can you go back to the end? There's insurance premiums paid for people that no longer were employed by the police department?
We had four employees that left. What had happened, in June, they had open enrollment for hospitalization insurance for all city employees. My secretary assisted in trying to make sure all our employees were properly entered into the insurance for 2017, the new policy premiums that were coming in. When she had access to this, she noticed four employees that had been gone, left the department. City Hall had been notified that they were gone, and they paid premiums over $21,000 of yet-tax dollars that's gone. $21,000 out of the police department's budget that's gone.
Forgot, yeah.
Pardon?
I'm ready to speak.
Whose responsibility would it have been to notify Dole that these employees are no longer?
H.R. City Hall, the department that paid part of their salary.
So has that issue been rectified?
Yes. Not to my satisfaction.
How long were these employees gone before, I mean?
Over a year, one of them.
And the premium was paid for the entire year?
The premiums were paid for these four former employees for a year plus.
Can we address that?
Yeah, I'd like, we, I'd like the...
Okay, we'll take your word of thumb. Let's go ahead. I'm open.
No, I'd like you to, I, we have a lot of city business.
This is, well, what is this? Is this in city business?
Chief, we have a lot of city business, and I'm happy to address some of your issues.
Let's address it, one by one, because I've got quite a few tonight.
Well, I don't understand how an employee can be gone for a year and the city continue to pay their hospitalization.
Well, the irony, Ms. Wheeler, the irony, is that there are council members here who owe the city money, who have not paid it, who illegally took insurance, and you haven't paid it back. You owe $5,000. He owes. Councilman Bodie.
My understanding, there is a part-time employee that currently works for the city.
I'm speaking.
Oh, we know that.
Thank you. You owe right under $5,000. Councilman Bodie owes under $15,000. Councilman Johnston owes. It's illegally gotten money. The money that was inadvertently not, the insurance that was not stopped for those employees has been retrieved. But I haven't heard one iota out of this council willing to pay back the insurance that they improperly took.
If it's illegal, put them in jail.
Well, you, sir, owe the most.
I'm ready.
You owe the most, councilman, ex-formal councilman of over $16,000.
Put us in jail.
I'm going to, you are out of order. You're speaking from the, from the gallery. So, let me just, you want to go through this? We can go through it. This administration, since the prior administration has been cut its budget, just on the general government side, not you, by 18 percent, and expecting to function at a higher efficiency, do more with less, which we've been trying to do. That 18 percent is equal to $200,000. I've had employees cut. I have people who were supposed to be doing full-time employment under H.R. payroll, et cetera, who are now answering the phone, doing IT, and covering days off for people who aren't here. So, Chief, we are doing a lot. The errors with insurance were fixed. Those were errors that were done during the prior administration. I regret that, and we take ownership, and we're going to fix it. But you know what, Chief? When you start talking about lengths of audits and lengths of budgets, you don't seem to mention that those budgets in the past did not follow the law. They did not meet the legal requirements as put out by state statute in the Local Government Budget Act. That didn't seem to bother you. Maybe you should have looked a little closer, too, maybe to the 2013 budget, where the city put under revenues $300,000 for BP Oil Field, pretended it had money, and then went and spent it. So then you and I take office, and we're dealing with a deficit. There's money that has come in from bonds that I have no idea what they spent it on. But you know what? We did, we eliminated the deficit. We've been put in a hard position, and we got out of it. We've asked to do more with less, that's fine. For you to sit there and say that you want everything stat yesterday, that's wonderful, Chief. We've got a lot of people who want stat yesterday. We're moving through it as fast and as hard as we can. We don't have a team of CPA, accountant, somebody, an assistant, et cetera. It is unrealistic for you or anyone else to think that we can run this budget and do everything on the minuscule amount of money that you, we have been provided. So we're doing it. I've had public information requests from you. I've spent sometimes upwards of a week answering and getting back. One of my return information took me two months to put together, and quite frankly, we have a lot more important things to do for the residents, to provide the servants for what they need.
Which it up?
Oh, wait, wait. So all of that, that just, all of that justifies the city spending $21,000 plus of taxpayers' money for insurance premiums that employees are not...
I never gave a justification.
Can I finish, please? I didn't interrupt. Oh, man.
Yeah, we got reimbursed. We're getting reimbursed.
We've been reimbursed?
Yes. We're getting reimbursed.
Oh, no, no, we haven't been reimbursed.
Oh, we're getting, you just...
Oh, we are getting reimbursed?
We're getting reimbursed.
That's news to me, okay. Well, second question, is that money going back into the police budget?
Everything is done by ordinance.
Well, it wasn't...
That wasn't the question.
It should have been taken in the first place, and it should be there.
I'll have to ask Linda on how to do it.
Stop blaming, start changing.
Well, Ms. Lulu, can it be done? Can it be put back in the police budget, being it came out of the police budget?
I can set CRI email them when they ask them how to do that, because it does cross years.
And if it can't be done, where does it go?
I asked CRI, the auditors, how best to handle that, because it does cross years. My feeling is the current year's goes against the current year's expense items, and nets out. But the prior year's money should go to your miscellaneous revenue, not to the expense, but to the revenue, but still to you. But I'm waiting for a confirmation from them of what to do with it.
All right, thank you.
And as far as the audit goes...
I'm not finished.
Well, I'm trying to go through the list, the plethora of accusations that you seem to always put out. You don't have the true support.
Well, if I don't have the support, why did they come back and change from being $161 under budget to $66 over budget, when I sent proper documentation? Wasn't hearsay or conjecture? It was all documentation, either ordinances, proposed ordinance, or correspondence from the city finance director, that they come back and say, "Well, you're $95,000 under budget." Is that conjecture? It's all, it's all written documentation that they said, "You're ninety-something thousand under budget."
I, I'm not going to...
So how you say, "I'm making this up"?
Chief, I'm not going to attest to what the city auditor did or did not do. I am going to tell you that this administration with Ms. Lulu ran numbers. The reason why Ms. Lulu said $75,000 under budget is because there was another item that said capital outlay. That capital outlay expense happened to be about $16,000, and it was all totally encompassing of the police. So when you look at the 95 minus the 16, whatever, it came up to the 75. It just so happened to be the exact same money, amount of money that she thought you were going to have by year end. The other thing is, we cannot keep going down these budget wars. We have laws that we have to follow and rules and procedures. And instead, you know what we get? We get council who put up revenue that don't exist. We get council who says, "Let's pass an ordinance that we have to have a budget passed prior and put it up, the proposed budget, prior to the month that it's really required by law." Then that same council leads to an, to defer adopting a budget for the year, so it's delayed and there's an audit finding. Then we have amendments to the budget, under your guidance, with your assistance, where you wanted more employees, sir, and you said, "I want more, I want to go up to 20." We had a proposed budget that didn't include that amount of officers, and so what, you know what happened on that budget? You know what happened? You didn't include payroll benefits. You also didn't include the insurance, et cetera, for the additional officers that were passed in the budget. So it was a fake budget. So you might have made everybody think the budget was balanced, but it wasn't. So now we're going to have to come back and readjust again in order to fix it.
How about the numbers we...
Wait, I'm not finished.
Oh, go ahead.
So it was a forced fake budget that was passed. So, when it was brought to your attention that you didn't fund for all the pay, all the additional payroll for the additional officers that you put up, you then, also the council proceeded to decrease the minimal, a reasonable adjustment upward on insurance, when we knew it was going to happen. So you know what we're facing with now? Now we're faced with doing another budget ordinance and giving more money toward insurance so that we can cover that difference, when we knew it was coming in the first place.
Any, any numbers we used towards putting together our proposed budget, we got from the finance director?
That's not true, because I...
Oh, yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Oh, yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Okay.
So, we can, we have...
Well, how do you know it's not true, Ms.?
Because I, I looked at it.
How do you know? We communicated with the city finance director to get that information.
I saw the numbers that you used, and they were not the numbers that Ms. Lulu, you changed them. And we also told you, we gave you a format that Ms. Lulu gave for you, if you wanted to put in for one officer, two officers, and three officers. And she said, "Please, use this, this format, plug in what you want, I'll fix the other pieces, whatever, so we could get you the right numbers." But you didn't do it, you made the numbers yourself. Then the other thing is that you want to make sure that on insurance expense, et cetera, that insurance expense, liability expense for the city is $200,000. We presented postal weight in Etterville, when Ms. Lulu first came in and took office, she presented postal weight in Etterville's findings, which they were going to charge you in '16, $101,000. But you know what? Ms. Lulu said, "You know what? That's not fair. That, the chief, the police department, let's use the real numbers." So we tried to give the real numbers so that you had less going toward your department. But you know what you did instead? You figured out, "Oh, maybe there's a little loophole that I can use." You know what? Keep it the same. No, keep it the same, and then only charge me $30,000, $33,000. So let's use the methodology from postal weight of expenses to get the higher dollar amount to the police department, and then, you know what? But use Linda's analysis for the expense, and then you're going to say that you had a $70,000 savings. So that's not how it cuts. It doesn't cut both ways, Chief.
It was, it was okay in 2015, when they gave me my allocated insurance without giving me the revenue, so I'm fifty-something thousand dollars over budget in '15. That was okay when the mayor did that.
No, it wasn't.
That was all right. But that was the same audit.
That's not true either. That's not true.
That was the same.
Oh, it wasn't? We didn't get stuck with the expense for insurance without the revenue? Is that, is that true, yes or no?
Chief, I went to back for you.
You did, because they went past the ordinance. I put it up. I begged three times. I came for 2015 audit, so the health insurance across the board was right.
And let's go back to what the mayor said originally about the ordinance, about laws. The ordinance is done by city ordinance, and ordinance is a law. So the budget was done by law. I didn't make up the budget. I didn't make up the law. The law was passed by the council, and they gave me, not everything I asked for, but what I proposed, part of it. Mayor made her proposal to the council, too.
But we told you during that time, Chief, that those numbers were forced. It's the same way they were forced. You didn't account for payroll expenses, retirement, et cetera, all these different things. And you didn't account for FICA match, you didn't account for, for health insurance, all those things.
Not true, folks. We went to city finance director and got the figures.
That is not, that is true. And as far as, let me just go back to 2015.
So what's that got to do with the city paying $21,000 in insurance premiums for employees that are no longer here? What's that got to do with it?
And it's being reimbursed, and I said it was an inadvertent error that we regret. But at the same time, you have a staff that has been cut to the bone, who's doing more with less, who are giving...
And so have we.
Who are getting public information requests that are taking a month at a time to fill. So I read minutes how you just, you know, you get one or two and it blows you up. Well, I'm on 30-something or 40-something public information request that I'm having to respond to. And that includes my entire team.
Well, everybody in my department wears more than one hat also, so I feel for you.
And this administration in the '15 audit, when I saw what postal weight in Etterville was doing to your budget on the tail end in the audit by allocating that insurance liability, I said it wasn't fair. In fact, I sent a seven-page letter to you almost a year ago explaining just that. We put up multiple budget ordinances to cover your expenses, to increase what was allocated to you, and it didn't get done.
That was done after the year closed and the books closed?
No.
And just like we've asked to get our money back from last year, y'all saying we can't do it. Same difference.
Because the law doesn't allow for it.
The law does allow for it. We've had the...
It doesn't allow for it.
Well, we've had auditors say it can be done.
You're talking about the rollover?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It can be done.
It depends on how you do it.
Well, I'm telling you, I'm at...
No, my auditor.
Becky Hammond with Tracy Whittle and the chief, Councilman Johnston was with me and she said exactly that this funds can be rolled over from 2016. We can create a line that says capital for 2017.
I'm not speaking for what Ms. Hammond...
Don't, because I'm telling you what she said. I'm not the only person that was present at that meeting.
I'm not speaking for what Ms. Hammond said.
Well, then Ms. Hammond needs to be at the next meeting to clarify.
Let me ask you...
But, wait, excuse me. The Larson Act and the Local Government Budget Act, any unspent funds goes back to the general fund. Now, if there's...
Not the police department.
Once it's allocated. Once...
Oh, I'd love to answer that. When you don't get budget financial reports on a monthly basis, last year, the first time the police department, also the council, got a financial report was October. It only went through July of last year. It's like looking at your checkbook balance and it only goes back to the end of July or beginning of July, end of July, whichever. And yet in October, it doesn't tell you anything.
Ms. Lulu...
And just what the mayor just said, she believes if anything's in that account come December 31st at the close of day, it's ours. So the next time we got a budget financial run was March of 2017. So December 31st came and closed. If you go back to a couple of minutes means back, I brought it up, I said, "Y'all send me in March a budget report going through the end of November 2016," and I've got $505,000 out of a $2 million budget sitting there. And I said, "How could that be? Can you prove it?" Well, I happen to have the paperwork and show it to them and they astonished. "How could that be? It's the paperwork that our City Finance Director sent."
And Chief...
And that's how it started. It started at 161, now we're up to 218.
And Chief...
Under budget for last year. May I finish?
Sure.
Okay. We have an audit stuff adoption tonight, 2017-15 for the 161,490. I am asking this council to pass at least that part. And as I said at the last meeting, there's been an increase in insurance premiums for all employees. And I talked to the insurance agent. I said, "If every employee, not just police, police, fire, city hall, maintenance, recreation, if all of them keep the same plan in the previous year, what would the increase in premiums for those employees be? $19,000 some change." I made the statement at the last meeting and I'll make the commitment today. I get the 161 tonight, I'll put $20,000 so no employee has an increase if they kept the same plan from last year. I've got several...
Chief, I'm gonna...
Can I finish?
I'm take umbrage with that because those funds...
Can I have a finish, Mayor? Can I have a finish?
Because those funds...
Can I finish?
Sure, finish.
You know, you have a habit of interrupting people so they try to lose their train of thought. You can take control. It happens all the time, not just to me, but everybody gets up to speak, you have to interject something. So I'll keep my commitment. If I get at least the 161,490 tonight, I'll give $20,000 out of that to pay the increase in premiums for employees. I've got two or three that are probably going to leave because they can't afford the increase in health insurance. We keep losing employees, especially police employees at all. By the time we put money into them and training, we've got a ton of money in them, we've got some experience. Our overtime and our details are very limited and they just can't afford it. And I understand, I don't fault them for it, but it's a fact of life. I'm asking the council to pass it tonight and take 20 of that 161 and put it towards this year's hospitalization premiums for employees.
I want everyone to pay attention closely to what was said. My money I'll give to the employees. My money, what I money. It is not our money. It doesn't belong to the elected officials. It belongs to the citizens who pay for it.
What happened to $21,000 that was paid in the premiums?
What happened to the $55,000 that wasn't paid from illegally acquired health insurance from the prior council?
What's that got to do with what we're here today?
It has everything to do with it.
It has nothing to do with what?
It has everything to do with it.
I wasn't here then, it has nothing to do with me.
It was. It did happen while you were here, actually.
I never got insurance.
In 2014. In fact, Chief, I've got a letter from Mayor Mosca to you while you were on the council offering health insurance to you.
And at the time it was offered to the council by ordinance?
No, it was not. It was never offered by ordinance.
Now we're going back to 2002, folks. You know, we're talking about 2017, but the mayor's going to dig up everything from the beginning of time. Still unanswered, $21,900 paid in hospitalization premiums. Okay, let's go to the next one.
Chief, can I ask you?
Sure.
I need you to put your council hat on for me for one thing, because I think I heard what I... I'm going to go with what I think I heard. So at the beginning of every year, whatever left over goes into one big pot.
That's what the mayor believes.
That's how this mayor is doing it.
She stated publicly, it's in an article.
She keeps saying that the prior administration left it with a deficit, but that's not the case. If you take that same philosophy from the prior administration and you put it all back into one big pot, she was left a surplus, not a deficit.
That's not true because I've got, actually, it's per fund. So, you know, councilmen...
I will provide the proper figures. Okay, let me finish. Can I finish, please? All right, so I want everyone to know that Councilman Wheeler and I were discovered, were the two that discovered that the audit report was done on the wrong budget. We had met with a senior official at Carl Rigs and Ingram and we were trying to get to the bottom of it just because, you know, for knowledge and we wanted to understand what was really happening and we came to the realization that this audit wasn't even right, it was done the wrong thing. This is what a senior official, and I quote, says at Carl Rigs and Ingram. "This is the most difficult audit I have ever been involved in in over 40 years. Posted judgments are out of hand and not right. Linda Lulu's process is completely out of line and something needs to change." End quote.
Being that I wasn't there to witness it...
My God.
I'll just...
I have witnesses.
I have a few of my own. I've also been told by... Let's go back to what we inherited. Let's go for your first point. This is a graph that has plotted every single audit for the last 12 years. And it says some pretty interesting things. So when the former administration, when you look at the general fund, can we agree that the general fund is different than the capital fund and that one doesn't really have anything to do with the other unless you decide as a board to transfer money? So the total in 2010 that was left, total combined, was $796,000, okay? Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, in 2011. I'm sorry, 2014. I've just got it, my contacts are going. We had a deficit in 2014 in the general fund of 1.25 million. In the capital fund, we did have money. We had $826,000. That meant if you looked at it combined and added both those funds together, it was at a total deficit of $429,000. So that's where 14 left, under your assistance, sitting on the council.
I'll get my...
So let's look at the difference when in 2015. The... Oh, no, no, it's not just BP. The general fund, remember we inherited 1.25 million deficit? We reduced it to 251. We decreased it by over $1 million. The capital fund had $848,000. Our total, so when you combine them, was $597,000 to the good, as opposed to the prior administration where it was $429,000 to the bad. So no.
I believe you are wrong and at the next meeting, I will have my documentation to support my cause. And if I am wrong, I will tell you that I'm wrong, but I am positive that you are wrong.
Just pull the audit report. I'll tell you the audit report.
Yep.
Those are the audit reports.
May I continue, Mayor?
Yep.
I'm sorry, Chief. I just want to tell you, because when we, Councilman and I discovered this, we like to fell out the chair. And you know, I called you, so I called you along, I'm like, "What's going on?" And I was relying on your experience as being on this side of the day.
As soon as I saw the numbers, I said, "These are not the right numbers." I even called Ms. Whittle from the meeting. I even asked the clerk Nicole to provide us with a copy of the budget ordinance that was passed because it started out with the money that was allotted to the council giving to the police department. And I knew it was over 2 million. I didn't know exactly what it was, but I knew it was over 2 million. The figure that started out was like 1.9 something. So I knew automatically it was wrong. I didn't even check any of the other departments, so they could have been wrong, too. I'm going to just be honest. Because my intention to go there was to address the ordinance that is up, that I was instructed that with the money over from 2016, we could roll over to 2017. Our meeting was July 11th, maybe 12th, I'd have to check. The audit was presented to this city on June 30th. So for two weeks almost, Carl Rigs and Ingram had this audit and obviously probably completed if it was turned into the city on June 30th. My argument I had was strangely that day, the auditor I was supposed to meet with called and said conveniently she couldn't meet, something came up, but Philip Revo with Carl Rigs and Ingram did continue the meeting with us. I did voice my opinion to him that I was aggravated, that if y'all knew these numbers, obviously prior to June 30th and here we are, my discussion was to come talk about chief's ordinance, only to find out that when I first saw it, I'm like, "There's no way this man is over, under budget." I mean, over budget, excuse me. And it was $66,000 and some change. Only to find out that now he's under budget 90-something, so that was about $150,000 error. And again, that was just that department. We didn't even discuss any of the other ones, so they all could be wrong. And I believe we received an email now Carl Rigs and Ingram is going back and redoing it because apparently the correct figures were given.
I don't know what's being done.
I'm not sure why the correct figures weren't given from the get-go. So God knows what we paid them to do this and I'm sure we're going to have to pay them again to do it correctly, I would think. I don't think they're going to do it for free. We didn't even address that.
Chief, can you just give Ms. Lulu your microphone?
We're good, we're working. We do need to get the microphone, though. Okay. I provided the CRI auditors with the copies of the signed ordinances and the resolutions because there are some resolutions that also affected our budgets. I gave them all of that. They came back to us, I believe it was the 29th of June, rather late in the day, with our very first draft of the financial statements. That's one of the last pages.
27th.
27th, was it?
Well, we got piecemeal, remember?
Yeah, we did, we were getting piecemeals. So I went through the numbers of that specifically because I was worried because the prior year, postal weight did use the wrong budget numbers. And I saw that the wrong budget numbers were used. They were used all over the place, but it wasn't the numbers that were published now. There was another iteration they gave us. They used the original budget, was 1806, without any of the amendments or any of the resolutions. I told them that. I said, "I gave you everything." They said, "We can't deal with it like that." So I stayed and I typed everything into Excel with a top sheet that gathered everything and I sent them that, which is the same one that I sent you guys the other day when you had your public information request saying, "What's up with the budget?" That is what I sent them compiled together because they couldn't compile it together on their own, probably because they were squished for time. We never saw the final iteration of the budget. June 30th was the day that the COCs went down and we didn't have power internet services forever. When it finally came through, we were pulling it through off of my phone and looking at things and not everything even came through to us. We looked at the major things. We did not see the final iteration of the report until, I think we got it from Nicole. And we were, because we'd been asking for the final audit.
And we don't, they plug in the numbers. Then they send pieces of it back for you to work on. And it's about moving a lot of different parts. I'm not the CPA, I'm not the auditor. That's, and all I can say is what is still amazes me is that with all your concerns, Chief, and the council, the date of June 30th has not moved from state law for time immemorial. You have been talking to the auditor, everybody seemed to be interested in the audit, but you know, not one of you got in the middle. I even got a, wait, I even got an interesting email because Linda had been waiting all day to try and work on an audit to see what was balancing. We didn't get anything until about 4:00 or 5:00, no, maybe 5:00 or 6:00 PM. So she stayed till 2:00 in the morning when, on one night, and I got an interesting email saying, can't wait to, from Councilman Bodie, "Can't wait to hear what that was all about."
I can't wait to hear what you were doing at 2:00 in the morning.
We were crunching the numbers because the audit report would come to us every evening. The financial statements would come to us, 5:00, 6:00, 7:00. One night we ate dinner at 5:00 and it came at 7:00. Then we stayed till 11:00. We stayed till 2:00, counting the numbers. So then when Becky and them walked in the next morning, they had our comments and they could fix them and give them back to us. And we didn't get the next round until the next night when it was dinnertime again. That's what we were doing till 11:12, 2:00 in the morning.
It's funny, it took us one day to compile all of the written documentation with eight exhibits and send it to the city auditor and they made the correction in one day. It took us, what, eight hours to compile all documentation, ordinance, ordinances, proposed ordinance, and correspondence from the city auditor, I mean, from the City Finance Director, for the auditor to take that and go from 66 over budget to 95 under budget.
One day for one page. Okay, we had 101 pages that I had to compile multiple numbers for and full support for and more invoices for and proof that things were signed.
There's no comparison.
How much is CRI paying, paid per hour?
I do not know what their hourly pay rate is.
Two months.
Because we're on a contract basis for the audit.
Yeah, do you know?
It's a, it's a, it's a flat.
It's a flat contract, no matter how many hours.
For the audit, because they assume how much.
It was thirty-something, forty thousand, I believe?
Yeah, something like that.
That includes the price of the audit?
That was the price.
And the corrections?
That was the price of the audit, so in addition to their hourly rate?
They don't charge us an hourly rate for the audit.
You know what? You don't have to talk to me like I'm an idiot. I'm asking a question. He's saying thirty or forty thousand. I'm asking you, if you're telling me, is that the price of the audit in addition to all the hours they bill us? Or is the thirty, forty, no matter if they work a million hours, plus the price of preparing a hundred-page audit? That's the question.
They don't bill us per hour.
So, it's a flat rate?
For the audit. But like you said, I do not know.
So, there may be addition.
Since they're looking at things now, because they haven't talked to us, we didn't even know that this was happening until now.
And just, Mayor, just to clarify, Councilman Bodie and I did not go to Carl Riggs and Ingram to discuss the audit. He presented it to us. He was quite shocked that we had received the copy, since it was given to the, to the city on June 30th, and here we are, two weeks later, talking about it. So, let me clarify that.
We were not given a copy on June 30th.
Well, we can bring Philip here next week, too, because it's exactly what he said. He had two copies, and we were shocked. And he goes, wait, y'all didn't get these? We were like, we didn't even know you turned it in. So, we didn't go there to discuss the audit, Mayor. We went there to discuss the ordinance about the money for the police department, just to clarify that. So, let's get back to the current state of the police department, so that Chief can continue.
Well, these four or five emails I sent this past week between the city finance director, CRI, and several other people and entities, all the time, Ms. Lulu, you billing the city to review, review these things I've sent in? All these emails I've sent and copied you to straighten this error out, you've been billing the city per hour to try and rectify it, correct?
It wasn't my errors.
I didn't, I didn't ask that. You're billing. Okay. All right. Then we have, the mayor came up with last year, or the finance director, I'm not sure who which, allocated overhead salaries per 2016 budget of fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, and to the police department's budget. We pay fifty, at the fifty-seven thousand mark, you was paying fifty percent of the HR director, thirty, thirty-five percent of the mayor's salary, thirty, thirty-five percent of two city employees for work that they do for the police department. So, when the audit came out, they only charged the police department thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. I'd ask for breakdown. Who got what percentage? What part went to the mayor? What part went to the city employees? What part for HR? Never got a, never received a point on that one.
I don't remember seeing that.
You don't? I'll go find it and send it to you again.
But I can tell you why it decreased, because when, at the beginning of the year, it's a budget. So, I'm estimating. At the end of the year, I went back through, and part of the salaries was estimated based upon the expenditures that was spent. So, everybody's expenditures are different than what I estimated. Plus, relooking at it and rethinking at it, the expenditures was based upon the vouchers and invoices that we're doing. I pulled your payroll out, because I said payroll has got nothing to do with the front desk doing their time. That's whose hours I was passing on to you. The HR is based upon employees. So, I pulled your salaries out. That's why you got quite a bit less overhead than what I budgeted for.
Why should the police department, or any department within city government, pay part of the mayor's salary, part of the HR director's salary, and part of city hall employees? That's part of their job function. If every time we go on a call, we can charge the people, okay, you called us, you got a barking dog, that's twenty-five dollars. I mean, it's part of what government is. We're a service organization.
We've gone through this at North.
Yeah, and I want to go over it again, because I think it's ridiculous.
Well, Postal Weight said to do it. We did it. We put it up. You guys passed the budget back in March. It was in there. You didn't pull the lines out. We had iteration after iteration later on, asking, because you have been complaining about it. And we said, okay, we'll wait and see what CRI does. Let's pull it out. We pulled that out.
Okay.
Those budget amendments never passed. So, then we did it.
We had no choice.
Okay, okay, okay. We're still paying.
When you, wait, wait. You complained about it over and over again.
And I'm complaining now.
And so, when you were given the opportunity to support an ordinance, taking the allocated overhead out, you stated, don't, leave it alone. You wanted it the same. We even put up a budget ordinance just doing that, I believe, correct?
No, folks. What it was, was there were several, several ordinances or several items. It's like legislation being passed.
But they have line items scratching.
Part of, yeah, part of what you need is in there, but in order to get it passed, you gotta pass A, B, C, and D, where there's nothing to do with the police department.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna lobby the council for something that doesn't apply to the police department.
So, they didn't just scratch a hundred and one line items of our 2017 budget? They couldn't just scratch one line item out of our two amendment budget for you?
Okay. I'm just saying, I think it's ridiculous.
I agree.
All right. The errors we've had with HR. We still don't have those police officers enrolled in the pension system. They're coming down on August the 10th at ten o'clock to try and work it out. My secretary sat with all the employees, did the application over. Two of the officers, because they have to take a physical, because of a pre-existing condition that their pension board takes into consideration, two of them had to go take a second physical, cost the police department, or cost your taxpayers, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars apiece. We tried on two occasions, my staff to meet with the mayor and HR director, and were pushed away both times by the mayor. I had some communication with the city attorney, worked out a thing where the HR director, and I asked, and I said the mayor was welcome to come, to meet with my secretary on a morning in my office to address this. HR director came on, over, they worked on it, I left the building. But it's been one error after another that's cost us. The state supplemental pay that the, that the police officers get, that goes towards their pension. What hasn't been properly calculated, so that's not included. They haven't taken out pension payments for some of the officers, or they have taken some out for others, and they haven't submitted it to the pension board. We did all of the applications in a timely fashion, despite what the audit says. And like you said, it's a narrative, it's a fiction novel. They didn't take out the proper income tax for these officers for the state supplemental pay, so now a couple of them are gonna have to pay a sum to both the state and the federal government, money they don't have. But it should have been taken out of their payroll check, but it wasn't done properly. But again, I paid twenty-something, thirty percent of HR director's salary. It's been constant error in payroll, and also had error in submitting overtime payments towards pension, like I said before. It's been one thing after another.
Would you like me to speak to the retirement?
Sure. I guess I'll take the blame for that, too.
Well, Chief, there are issues.
Let's hear them.
That, there are issues. The packets that you collected and put together, you signed, you get stamped by notarized.
Correct.
Were incomplete and wrong.
Who says?
The retirement people say.
Nope. Because one of the things is that, is that physicals come in from, come there that does the physicals, and they sit in, in the HR director's file.
That's not true.
Because they, that's not true? I can bring two people to testify that the physicals would sit in an HR department's packet, and were not sent to MERS, the police officer that comes in.
There were forms that you didn't have affi, first of all, let's explain to the residents very simply. Well, a long time ago, the city had the option, like many other cities in the state of Louisiana and across the country, to opt out of social security for civil service employees for fire and police. The city never did. So, they have two retirement systems. And it's good for some officers, I would think they might like it, but bad for other officers, because they get dinged twice if they want to participate in both. Simple. So, the, the retirement for the police is a large chunk of money to take out of that. I would like to know if that officer would like to have that money taken out of their check. But do you know that officers aren't allowed to come and speak to city hall and work with city hall and, and, and HR? Do you know that we've made appointments and got agreement from officers to come and see us at city hall, and waited after hours, and no one showed? Do you know that we send out emails to officers, and then I get emails back from the chief, because when he gets wind of it, don't contact any of my employees unless you contact me first?
Correct.
These employees deserve the right to be able to talk to HR and talk about their benefits. It was amazing. It was astonishing, the last email that you sent, when we talked to the retirement system, working through all the problems, and I got the director of the retirement system for the police to say, you know what, Mayor, we'll just come down and do that if you want. I said, you know what? I'd love you to. Why don't you come? Send out the request. I then forwarded it to the chief and all the officers that were affected that might have some issues to clarify. And then the chief responds to the state, I told you, Mayor, don't contact my officers without letting me know first.
That's correct.
And this is the state director of retirement, who's trying to come down with her team to deal with the retirement. So, as I've said, the packets have to come in, they come in from the police department. We're not allowed to see it. My administrative assistant went through all the packets, and then delineated every single thing that was wrong with the packets. We had packets that were incomplete, not in just one part, multiple places. So, those packets are no good, they have to go back. That gets signed off by the chief, those packets. So, they're wrong. So, you can't even submit them. They bounce back. So, when the retirement people reviewed everything, well, they said, you know what? This packet's wrong, this packet's wrong, this packet's incomplete. So, Chief, I would say that it might be a nice idea that we could work together. Also, did you know?
It wouldn't be nice when I came to your office twice and you threw me out.
Wait, we're not even allowed to have any.
I made the comment before, you don't like my staff, and when my staff shows up, they have to leave. Well, I'm not gonna be with you alone. And going back to this, there's nine members of the police department. If we just pull them off the street without making some kind of arrangements, you'll have nobody protecting you if you call for service. So, maybe it's nice that we should know who needs to go, and we need to arrange personnel so that the streets are covered. That's number one. Number two, the reason we didn't want the employees to go over to city hall, because they tried to correct the error they made. And the error was, they didn't collect the city officers portion of the pension. One of them was seven hundred dollars, and they wanted to take it out of his next paycheck. You know what would happen if you take it out of his next paycheck? He gets zero. He gets nothing. So, that's why we said, do not go over there without us. I've talked to the pension system. They're coming down, and they're gonna supposedly work something out where these officers can buy their back pay that, when they weren't putting it system up to a year, year and a half ago, and do some kind of monthly payment plan to get caught up. We pay, the city pays thirty-one percent on each dollar they make. And yes, there was a mistake made years ago, that Harahan is in both systems if they're in the pension, like the police and fire have a pension system, and we have to pay in social security. We're not the only city. I go to conferences, and other chiefs have this problem. So, it's not unique to Harahan. It's unfortunate, though. And to say that they collect on two, that's not the case. There's a windfall. So, they don't collect, these officers don't collect social security, dollar for dollar, and the pension at the same time. So, that's a misnomer. That's misleading. So, it's not they have two great pensions. The only thing these officers have from the city by working here is a decent pension system. And for them not to be into it, the biggest part, God forbid, if one of them gets hurt right now, and they get disabled, you know what they got? Nothing. Nothing. They're not in the system, because they're waiting for the city to send some money to the pension system.
That money has been sent in, and.
That money's not, well, what, they telling me something different than telling you? I'm telling you, they said, that's what they waiting on.
It's been received, and we've been making contributions.
As of a week ago, it hadn't. Well, maybe they're in the system now, thank God.
And Chief, it would have, I never turned you away. I had.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Wait, 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 wait.
You never turned me away, but I went there the second time with Captain Adams, Ms. Whittle. You told them to leave, and you wanted me to stay. And as I walked out the office, your office, you yelling at me, Tim, Tim, stay, Tim, Tim, come, come back, don't leave, come. That's not true?
No, Tim.
That's not true?
Let me, no, because you know what? You always say half stories, and this is just so sad.
Wait, 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 wait. You didn't yell, you didn't yell at me as I was leaving? Yes or no?
No. You know what you did?
You didn't?
Chief, you know what you did? You, you have got, this has got to stop.
Yes, it does. Yeah, y'all better move away, because once she turns her nose, it's gonna hit you. This is unbelievable, Mayor. I can't believe you could sit up there and tell those kind of stories, Mayor. Twice, I went over there. Once with Sergeant Gliber and Ms. Whittle, and we went in your office to talk to Mr.
Chief, this has to stop. I agree.
Yeah, it's gotta stop, because these mistakes are costing this department and this city money, and it's costing them.
Your.
You know why? Because I'm tired.
Let's go on to the city's business. Let's go on to the city's business.
Okay. All right. What I don't understand, we have InCode is our software package for city finances, and I know it was out for a while, correct? Ms. Lulu? You said it was broke.
I never said it was broke. I said there was a problem with the budget. It is fine now.
Okay. Is that why we get two reports? We get one financial report from InCode, and then you did a spreadsheet?
The spreadsheet.
I put the numbers from InCode monthly into the spreadsheet. There isn't a report in InCode that does month by month, so everybody can see how things progress. I find it nice to see, oh, this goes up, this goes down. I can see this coming in every other month, or whatever. It gives a nice flow for the money. It also helps me see if I missed anything, because I can see the flow, and I know, oh, wait, this looks wrong, this is double Y, that kind of thing. Lastly, the budget wasn't right in InCode for several months, but my Excel spreadsheet had the budget correct. So, again, that was something you could use. If you don't want it, I won't give it to you.
I'm not saying. I'm saying it's not double, not doing double the work.
It doesn't take that long to type the numbers in.
Still takes time.
But I don't, if InCode had a report that listed it out by month, that would be great, but they don't.
You know, Mayor, you talked about public records requests. I've got some that are going back since May 5th. Revenue report, itemized list accounting services by Ms. Lulu for the police department for 2016 and 17, per check register. That's in May of 16th. Copy of contract with CRI for auditing an amount paid for this year, amount of hours billed for 2017, and amount that was billed to the police department for 2017. That's since the May 15th. Total amount of funds paid to Ms. Lulu for 2017. Total amount of salary or pay received from all city employees for 2016, and a job description of all city employees for 2016. Some of these could be just probably printed out very easily, I would think. But as May, it's been several months, and the public records request says three days, and we're still not in receipt of anything.
Chief, I've asked for simple things like phone numbers for your employees, so we can contact them if we need to contact them.
And as their personal cell phones, and they request that they not be given out because of the type of work that they do. And we've explained to your administration, this is on time of storms or types of emergencies. All of our people in contact with us either by cellphone or by radio. So, if city hall needs to get in touch with an employee, we have a city policeman, usually at city hall, that can get in touch with me or one of the supervisors. They get in touch with the officer. These officers do not like to have their cellphone numbers given out.
I would just like to be able to speak to them themselves to see.
Why? They police employees, they're not your employees.
They're the city employees.
Pardon?
They're city employees.
They're city employees. Wow. Another note. Couple nights ago, we had several car burglaries, attempted car burglaries. With the assistance of the sheriff's office, we've made two, possibly a third arrests as we're speaking right now. There were two juveniles and two adults. One juvenile, one adult from Harahan, one juvenile, one adult from outside the city in Mary. So, that's being handled. I can't ask enough. Please, lock your car. Press the button, lock your house. These people come through here, and it's easy pickings. They just go car to car, or truck to car, and hit door handles. They open up, they rummage through your vehicle, they're found, not just here, but all over, cell phones, guns, laptop computers, money, you name it, cameras. Please lock the door. They don't know, I can't say they'll never do it, but they don't normally break a window, because it makes noise and attracts attention, and most people have car alarms. So, it's easy just to open a door that's unlocked and take your valuables. Please. If you see anything suspicious, some people happened to be out there the other night, between two and four in the morning. When you see something suspicious, not leave the 911, or call the police department. One of the things that was said before from Ms. Lulu, on June the 30th, our communication, landline, internet, and television for city hall and the police department is COCs. COCs was out for about six hours. We work off the 911 system from Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, we work off the sheriff's office radio system. We went in contact with them by cellphone, told them we had a problem. And any call that ever goes through 911, they, they know the sheriff's office, the dispatch, no matter what it is. Somebody from Harahan dials 911, we're being notified, Harahan police officer's going out to investigate. So, if you ever call a police station, and you have a problem where they don't answer, or it's busy, or something doesn't sound right, dial 911, and we will respond. We're looking into now if there's a possibility of getting a second, a second carrier with the same number. If we can, we're gonna do that, to try to avoid this from happening in the future. But, and another problem, we're bringing out some extra vehicles to ride the street, because some people in Harahan have COCs for their phones. So, that means they would be without phone service. So, right around six o'clock, everything came back online, and that's when Jefferson Parish hit the chase on Oak and Sixth Street, and everything changed all of a sudden for another hour and a half, but those two individuals were apprehended. Also, going back to the burglaries, if you've got young children, and they're supposed to be spending the night over at Harry's house, or Larry's house, or whatever, check on them. Make sure that they where they're supposed to be. A lot of this could be avoided. Y'all need to keep close tabs on your children and young teenagers. It's a different world today. About a month ago, Lieutenant Loudon and one of our reserve officers and myself, we went through the city, we picked up about forty streetlights that were out, and reported energy, and they came out last Saturday with four crews, and they took care of most of them. If you see any kind of yellow caution tape, that means the street light's out. We notified of it, and we notified energy, and they will be out to check it and repair it. Or you can call a police station, if you have a light that's out by your house.
Tim, how about lights are stable all day long?
I wouldn't worry about it. We pay, the city pays anywhere, an average of ten thousand dollars a month for streetlights. Energy doesn't care if the lights are on or off. We paid for them to be lit. If we notice they out, and we notify them, they change the bulb, and the light's on. So, whether it's on or off during the day, it doesn't make a difference. We paying a one flat fee. Well, we still paying around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for those streetlights to be on. Again, street lighting is also a deterrent to crime, and it's also part of our tax dollars. Mayor, I received sheriff's office tax reports for the last two months, and I've sent them out. April and May, we've had like a, a double or terrific increase in sales tax revenue this year. They said in April of this year, we had a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, a ninety thousand dollar increase over April last year. And in May of this year, we had a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar sales tax income, with an eighty-seven thousand dollar increase over last year. How is that additional money being used? Is that, is that an average every month? You're not aware of it?
I am aware of it.
Okay. Has that been the same, the previous?
I just didn't know if you were gonna give me a moment to respond.
Okay, go ahead.
The amounts fluctuate. So, if we get more, the way you handle that is that we will have to put a budget amendment up to change the amount received. The only way that more can be expended is to have a budget amendment also, in order to increase expenses. So, there are waxing and waning of the sales tax. That is normal. But we're not gonna know until the end of the year as to what the true number is.
Well, January, February, March, were the increases that much? Well, January, February, March, were the increases that much too? Almost double?
I'd have to pull out the numbers.
Well, it's just, you know, it's good for us. At two- two months in a row, we've had almost double increase in sales tax revenue from the year before. And then as I asked before, the operator on the agenda, which I thank you about the advisory committee. We need to do something, look into this police department, maybe a tax package or something because we losing offices left and right lately. They just- the lack of income here, the lack of details, the lack of overtime, I don't know how they survive. One last thing, I know I mentioned last month and heard it again. Well, take back a second. Folks, we are sitting on an oasis in Harahan. I said this before, and I might just say this on the police chief, this is why I live here and this has been going on before I got here and it'll be going on after I leave, hopefully, that we have no idea how good we have it. When you look around, all around us, what's going on crime wise, we need to say some prayers and thank God. We are extremely fortunate. We all take it for granted. I do too. But if it wasn't safe, I wouldn't live here, number one, and a dog, I wouldn't wanna be your police chief. We have a gold mine here. We all need to participate. Even though we have a couple of cars on the street 24 hours a day, you're our eyes and ears. If you see something that doesn't look right, call the station or call 911. We're coming out to investigate it. We're your friends. It's a partnership. The part about police, one minute we can be there on ambulance call and save your life and then 15 minutes later, we stopping you or family member and give you a ticket and we're no good SOB. It's double edged, but it's true. But we're here to protect you. We don't make the laws, we enforce them. But we need your help. You're our eyes and ears. We can have a car ride right down the street, which happened the other night. Well, right down the street and after they passed, the car burglars came out. Second about the rumor, last one I say and people keep asking me, I'm running. No, I'm not running for mayor. I love my job. I'm running against a police chief. I'm not running for sheriff. A friend of mine, Joe Lepento, is running and I am supporting him. So, thank you all.
Could you come up, Calvin? This is Calvin Hartmeyer. He's the city engineer. Thank you for waiting. He was just gonna stay for the council meeting, but the- some of the council members asked him to come up and speak. We ha- I have informed the council of a very tenuous situation with our lift station eight which pumps 90% of the sewage into the sewer plant in Calvin.
Where Ames Group is currently-
I- I offered to- I had them design it.
Right. The Ames Group is currently designing the repairs. They should have a first draft of those repairs by next week and we should easily be able to put out for advertisement by the end of August, hopefully earlier than that. We are meeting with a couple of contractors and Veolia tomorrow afternoon to review a possibility of doing some advanced work that would give a backup connection. So if things fell apart, they would be able to bypass pump immediately. We're gonna look into how quickly that can be done and what that cost is. So those issues are moving forward with regard to pump station eight. We're looking into the design of pump station six, which is to take flow out of eight, to reduce the flow from eight. So now we have two significant pump stations in the system. If we lost one, we would still be able- half the world would still work. Right now, we lose that one and 90% of the world stops. So again, we are working on a bypass situation that hopefully can get started soon. And then we're looking into further action, which is a longer term, bigger project, which is pump station six.
Can you explain what will happen if that pump station goes out?
Basically, we are gonna be into an overflow situation where to keep sewage flowing in, out of the houses, it's gonna have to flow someplace else. Vacuum trucks can't pump enough to replace the pump station. We had that occasion about two years ago when the force main from eight failed and it took about 36 hours to get it back and operational. And during that time, there was an overflow. It was reported DEQ and, you know, cleanup was done as best as possible. So we're trying to get ahead of that so it doesn't happen. It has been leaking for a little while. Can't tell you if it's getting worse or not, but it continues. It's not gonna get better. So we're looking at a couple of things.
I know you have to send estimates and all that stuff out, but do we have a rough estimate on what it's gonna cost?
I'm in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 for the repair at eight. The fix, the bypass, we should have a good number by the middle of next week. If these contractors come in, I'm asking for kind of three pieces of that puzzle. One, they're gonna have to do some exploratory excavation to see exactly where the line is and confirm the size and type of pipe. The next issue is how quickly can you put this fix in place? What we wanna do is it would be a midnight connection. At midnight, we'd shut pump station eight down. The hole would already be excavated. The pipe would already be put together. We cut it out. We put it in a new place, back up and operational by 5:00 in the morning. The system can handle that level of storage. But I wanna know from the contractor, how long does it take to get that valve? Talking about an 18-inch valve. We're talking an 18 by 12-inch T, a 12-inch valve. How long do those pieces are gonna take to get in? They're not odd sizes. They're certainly not that 18 by 10-inch by 6-inch side outlet T that we talked about last month. So it's not a specialty piece, but that doesn't mean it's sitting in somebody's backyard either. So I just need to understand the timeframe of the availability of that equipment. You know, it could easily be fixed in a month or at least the bypass in place. What that means is there is a place, if the pump station fails, we can now go out with a portable pump and in a matter of 12 hours, be back in operation.
If that lift station fails, how long could most of the residents, 90% of the residents, be without sewer?
If it- if it broke right now, we're probably looking at between 48 and 72 hours of trauma. You know, and it's- there are, I mean, most houses- most houses are higher than the street. It's gonna come out of the manhole before it backs up into the house. But as we know from last Christmas or two Christmases ago, we have some areas in the greater Royal Land area that are not that situation, that may have a potential for backing up into the homes. Just how the elevations work. So it's- it's got an extreme issue of just how quickly we can get in to get something fixed.
So just like I said, a rough estimate, 150,000 to 200, just for the eight?
Just for-
And then the bypass will probably cost-
Well, that's part of that. That's part of that. Yes. It was kinda ballpark 75 each number. And that- that gives me the 150 and just because I don't know what I don't know, I'm calling it 200. Yes. So it's, you know, it's- it's a dig. We gotta dig up the line. It's a big pipe. 18-inch pipe is, you know, fairly significant. Those valves are a couple of tons. It's- it's a little bit of work. So it is-
Yeah, well, that's a high priority. I mean, you wanna be able to flush the toilets.
We're out tomorrow afternoon looking at, with the contractors, to get this started. To see what- what the issues are, what, you know, what they can- what they can do for us. So that's- that's the initial work that's going on with that program.
And is there a possibility to actually get in there and they see something else wrong going on in there and it could cost more?
Well, again, the general- it's always possible. But the intent, we've had, you know, Ames has been down in the pump station, has taken all the measurements, has seen what we're looking at. We are talking about replacing all the pipes and fittings, not the pumps. The pumps are still operational and not the actual force main itself. So we're talking about IT, several valves, check valves and fittings so that the inside of the station will be essentially rebuilt by the time we're done. But we're not talking- the pumps are the most expensive item, short of that oddball T.
The pumps themselves were just replaced recently, weren't they?
Correct. We fixed them and repaired them and we're doing repairs at seven and nine right now on the other- on other pumps. You know, we're constantly repairing pumps. But the pumps are currently functioning and operating well.
Well, while you're up there also, my concern being this money that we have to fork out real quick and come up with the other stuff that we have to come out with, that was coming up tonight on ordinances with capital. We pretty much have to juggle. We have to figure out what's more important and what's not, and to me sewer is definitely more important than maybe a couple of these things.
Can we fund the 150 or 200,000 that you believe the estimate is for the repairs through the DEQ loan?
We have- we are talking to them. It is a- it's possible to do. We have to bid it properly.
Right.
If we were to go and start working on that repair, it- the DEQ process is not reimbursable.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. If we could upfront with our- with our capital-
If we put the bypass in, for example, and did that quickly so we had the backup, we had a way out if- if things went bad, that would be the only portion that could not be included in the DEQ. But we're also looking at bidding that as well. If they tell me some of these items are long lead times for material, we can proceed with the design and, you know, it would be part of the DEQ program. They are possible. I've- I've talked to the state. We've got to get a environmental exclusion, which just adds pump stations and force mains to the current environmental impact study that they already did associated with the gravity lines. And that's all easily done and we're working with that now on that issue. So it is a possibility. Similarly, pump station six could also go that way.
It just seems as though we wouldn't wanna use our capital cash, you know, on hand to do these repairs. If we could use the loan money, that's ideal.
Those are options that are available and we're looking at keeping all of your options open, you know. Again, short of doing an emergency repair tomorrow on that line, which is not my current plan, because again, that would not be reimbursable.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you mention something like if the line were to fail, would a pump truck be able to help out temporarily if it were to?
The vacuum- 5,000 gallons at a shot when we're talking about something that's on the order of 500 gallons a minute, you know, 10 minutes and by the time you take that truck over, unless you got 1,000 trucks, I'm being a little obnoxious, 50 trucks, you're not ever gonna keep up. And we don't have that many trucks in the area. You know, Blue Flash is nearby. They are helpful, but, you know, it still takes time to suck up 5,000 gallons and then go discharge 5,000 gallons and then come back. So we tried to do that to a degree and we, you know, we failed at doing it two years ago when the- when the force main broke, right at the playground, but they did it. I mean, they did what they could. They then did chlorine cleanup afterwards. And it's- it's a reportable overflow. It's part of the process. It's within the plan and, you know, we're trying to stay ahead of it. There are potential fines associated with it as well. So it's the other- that's the other bad side of it.
Well, to move on from that, like they were saying, we wanna try and get you up early so you can get out. And I know we have ordinances coming up, so I'll just have a few questions on ordinances.
Absolutely.
On this one with the drainage to go from one side of the highway to the other.
I'm planning on withdrawing that, tabling that to-
Okay. Yeah, because I was- we rode and-
You've got the report. It's a complicated report, but, you know, that's-
I still wanna just talk about it, even though you go withdraw it. Myself, Councilman Baudier, Eric Shadlane, Mr. Carlton, we took a ride around looking at the drains on this side of the highway. Yeah, that's this side of the highway as it goes this way. And some of them were half full, some of them were completely covered. So is the drainage really gonna help? Getting from one side to the other if the other side has nowhere to drain to elsewhere?
There are a number of cases that I'm aware of that there are larger pipes that go underneath Jefferson Highway and the pipe actually holds water. Luckily, it works by gravity, so the fact that it's a bigger pipe, it's just holding water while nothing's happening, but you still get enough head by virtue of gravity through from the south side to the north side. So while they're holding water today, that doesn't stop the water from flowing full in the pipe when there's enough backflow on it, when there's enough area on it. Downside of it is they can also, because it's full, they can also, the solids, the sand, the grit that's just washed away in another rainfall settles out. So now the pipe is half full of solids. In that case, it doesn't flow full because that will solidify over time. So there's, you know, it'd be nice if the highway department went out and vacuumed out these and they don't do it as often as they should. Man, we've had that problem along Hickory. They did some cleaning a couple of weeks ago. You know, it fills up over time with the sand that's come off of everywhere. So, but yeah, I have noticed that as well.
And then the last question is on this other ordinance up with the street repairs. Is it normal practice to- I see a couple of these. It's bringing up sidewalks and stuff like that. Is that normal practice?
Well, I mean, you can't. I- in particular, I guess if we're doing any kind of drainage repairs typically where the sidewalk is. But as I drove, I drove BFW tonight before the meeting and there was at least one area that the street was higher than the sidewalk, which is currently, you know, the city's involved in a lawsuit on the west side of town for the same exact thing. The sidewalk floods and, you know, we're involved in that lawsuit. So what we're trying to do as best we can is in this new, we could just go in and just mill an overlay and do it without regard to the drainage configuration. I'm trying to avoid, or I would like, I'm recommending that we avoid that issue and do a design that, you know, we can try to get a positive drainage flow so that we don't create the bird baths, which are a minor issue. But in some cases, there's a couple of driveways and sidewalks in the area that look extremely low. So that we may be doing some sidewalk repair, but essentially most of what that estimate, and that's why I said 300,000 versus that- excuse me, 238?
328.
It's 328. Okay. So that's why I'm not trying to do all of that. I'm trying to keep it in that $300,000 budget that's in there. The number was higher, but I think it was some- there was some overkill. It was some extra contingency and some quantities that I think we can keep in under the 300, including the design. So, but yeah, it was a lot of curb and gut. There are issues in there and again, that's why the recommendation was less than that budget, less than that estimate.
Any other questions? On the meeting tomorrow, I just wanna clarify is to look to see if there's any prep work that can be done in case of a failure, correct?
Yeah, we're talk- Veolia is concerned as they are the operators of the system that they wanna get ahead of this issue and they wanna get a better cost estimate to see what can be done. So they're inviting contractors out to review the situation. I've got Ames showing up so they can discuss what their design is so that this came up this afternoon in conversations with Veolia. And we're just- we're trying to be proactive. We're not stopping the design that we're doing, but we're getting additional input from the contractors. Because what we're trying to do is we're trying to put NAT and a connection that allows us to bypass with a portable pump. So the bypass has to be accessible at street level, but, you know, it's gonna be in a manhole. So that- so there's some structures that have to be built. There's some road that's gotta be torn up. There's some work that has to be done. If we can do it, if it works as a logical approach, certainly before anything would be expended, they would be requesting a task order through their normal task order process, but they would have actual quotes that we can discuss and review. So this is just- it's an attempt. It's another way of fixing the problem because I guess Veolia is more concerned now than they were a week ago. I can't tell you why.
And Calvin shared pictures with me and other staff members with Edwin Marcel, et cetera. And I actually, I think I talked to you and said if you wanted to, the council wants to see them. What's particularly interesting is that this isn't gonna be an off-the-shelf type of fitting, that pipe that you're gonna be putting in the ground. It's gonna be a very custom-
Well, Ames is work- Well, Ames is working on trying to avoid that, in all honesty. What's there is an extremely custom tee, okay? We're trying to go back with a more traditional combination of fittings. There's just not a lot of room in that pump station. You know, we can't realign the pumps, because the pumps are connected to a pipe that goes through the wall into the wet well, so the pumps are where they are. I've got to get from those three definitive points to a single point, and I've got to tie all three lines into a single point. So it takes a little bit of math. The design engineer went back today because he was an inch off. Something just didn't quite work with the way he had it laid out, and he wanted to go reconfirm measurements. That's how tight we're being on this. You know, we're trying to go back in with some more typical fittings, less extraordinary. But, and we think we can do it.
You said it's been leaking, but you're not sure if it's getting worse?
I haven't been informed that it's getting worse. It continues to leak, it's not ever going to get better. It just, it has corroded over the last fifty years, and it's going to continue to corrode because it's leaking from the inside out. So, there's not a lot we can do to the outside, as soon as you try to fix the outside, you're just going to punch through the whole pipe and then you've lost it. So-
I got you.
So, when a repair does actually happen, the city, just so that people will know, there will be, there will be an interruption in sewer service, but it will be timed-
It would be a scheduled event that we would do, and it's typically, it starts around eleven o'clock at night. We did that work the other night, you know, to try to do it in off-hours. It's the least amount of flow, it's when the sewer flows the least amount, is from essentially ten till five in the morning, typically. And you try to schedule it so that you pump everything down. You do have backup vacuum pumps that can handle what may come up over your plan, but you turn off all the pumps, and you've got to turn off eight, and you've got to turn off nine, you've got to shut everything down because I can't, nine, which is up Hickory, nine and ten are up Hickory, they're pumping south into the same force main, it would backflow into the open pit. There's also a time when, once we cut the pipe, we've got raw sewage flowing into that pit that we've got to vacuum out that flow. So it takes a little bit of effort, takes a little bit of coordination, we will have vacuum trucks on site to do this work. The intent is that the citizens don't see any interruption of service. You know, they will continue to use the facilities during that period of time. It's just going to, you know, we probably shut down six, seven, and eight so it backs up throughout the whole system. That's what, you know, that's what pipe's for, is the whole sewage.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I think you get to leave. We will now open, address the council, anyone wishing to come and address the council, please come up, state your name, you have three minutes, and-
My name's Tim Bodier, I live at one eighty-four Oakland, and I'm the senior councilman on this council. And I'm going to ask for a part of personal privilege to bypass the three-minute rule. First of all, I'd like to address a very particular comment made at the last planning and zoning meeting they attended. Someone stood up from the audience and yelled out that the mayor cannot get anything done because she has a hostile council. This comment really stuck, struck me to the core, because the slander being spread about this council by the mayor could not be further from the truth. Seventeen, seventeen employees have now left jobs with the city of Harahan, seventeen. This is an unheard of amount of turnover under any mayor's tenure in two and a half years. In these terminations or fires, one, there was a wrongful termination lawsuit, a pregnancy discrimination lawsuit, and also, one of these people were forced to write a reason for resigning was because he was treated horribly, powerably by two councilwomen at a council meeting. He then came later, he then came to a later meeting and explained that he would not write what the mayor told him. She then removed him from his seat and wrote the termination letter herself and threatened him if he would not sign, sign it. This is all on tape, if you don't believe me, you can go request a video and you can look at its public record. The police chief, whom supported Tina Moselli in the mayor's election and a big part of why she won the race, has now realized the incredible poor job that the mayor is doing, and maybe it's done by design, as I agree with him as well. And now has literally had to fight for information so he can get concerning his budget and department. This and many other reasons almost led to every policeman walking off, putting your health, safety, and welfare in jeopardy. The council has actually made laws to be included in the financial deals that the mayor makes with city finances because the council, the job of the council is to be good stewards of taxpayer contributions and taxpayer dollars. Yet, time and time again, we are excluded from these negotiations. I would also like to remind the citizens of Harahan that Councilman Hewitt, Johnson, Wheeler, and Bodier stood up against Mayor Moselli and Councilman Benton's radical increase in sewer fees. These four councilmen worked numerous hours searching for ways to cut these fees that the mayor, accountant Lulu, and Councilman Benton were strapping on the citizens of Harahan. I for one sure am happy that this council stood up for the people of Harahan and did right by our fellow citizens. I implore you to take your blinders off and see, this is not an action of four hostile councilmen, but an action of four councilmen with honor and the willingness to stand strong against the mayor, Tina Moselli's wrath and scrutiny. I am asking you to not be so willing to listen to the mayor's slanderous words and reach out to the councilmen who stand and fight for you. I have sat on three councils, under three mayors, three police chiefs. I have never been so honored to serve with this group of councilmen and women who, at all odds and risk of personal attacks, over and over, stood strong. I am honored because we make good laws, and I honestly believe that this council has done the best job of any council I have ever served on to make sure your money does what it's supposed to be doing. Just to reiterate, seventeen employees have left City Hall, including all of our institutional knowledge, all. Four of the five councilmen stand strong in doing what is right for our great city. The police chief has now had to stand against Tina's tyrannical reign, and the writing is on the wall. So please, before you believe all of the rhetoric, look for the truth, and I promise it will set you free of all the horrific lies that this mayor is spreading about the council in order to cover up what is really going on, which is paying all her cronies lucrative contracts and sweetheart deals. I said it before, and I say it again, my daddy says, "When the whole world says you wrong, then it's a good chance you probably are." Second, I've actually been out, and I feel honestly that if we have a mayor that's not going to do a mayor's job, then the council should stand up and take that job. So I've been out, working very hard and diligently in the city, trying to get some things accomplished and work, and I'll read the statement as well, to let you know just a real state of the city and what's really going on. Councilman Johnson, myself, former mayor Carlo Ferreira, and former councilman Eric Chatelain have put some boots on the ground and spent some time viewing all the drainage and crossovers under the highway and inspecting the ditches along the side of the highways as well. I am here to report that at the lowest level, the ditches are halfway full of mud and a lot of, in a lot of cases, full of debris. My analysis is simply, before we start spending eight hundred plus thousand of your tax dollars on redoing all the pipe, from a survey that was done years ago, as the mayor and her engineer recommended, of course, I have contacted State Representative Kirk Talbot to have the DOTD come and scoop out the ditches since this is a part of state property, and he has agreed. And I also have confirmation of that email from his assistant, Tia. I asked, I am asking, that Edwin Marcella, head of city maintenance, be there to monitor these operations to give us a better assessment of the conditions of the highway and the drainage, ditches, and the crossovers. Thank you very much, Representative Talbot. Please note that this comes at no expense to the citizens of Harahan, and that this council, being good stewards of your money, believes the best place to start is where it comes at no cost to the city so we can use your tax dollars on other important projects. Second, I took it upon myself to meet with Pierce Woods so that we can get some kind of resolution with all the back-and-forth battle of the flying sand and debris and illegal mulching. I am here to report that I have seen one point two million dollars in road repair and installation through cost and design. Ultimately, the cost of the road will be two point two million when complete. Pierce is making every, I believe Pierce is making every effort to conform to the city's simple demands of being a good neighbor. He has future plans of actually opening a retail site in the Jefferson Parish lawn, and at some point, getting the mulching operation moved. We had a very simple conversation, and it was simply that mulching is breaking the law, and if it's not moved in a timely manner, the people of Harahan and myself will not stop till he abides by the law. He stands very strongly on the point that he has given the Corps everything they have asked and not received correspondence from Colonel Clancy, and not received correspondence from Colonel Clancy to approve the second phase of the road, which moves the back road behind the river from the haul road. I have forwarded the email to Pierce from Colonel Clancy stating that they are waiting on some details, and hopefully that will get rectified soon. And I'm here to report that, since Colonel Clancy, myself, the reams and Pierce, that he has had, he's gotten that approval. That second road will now be built. It just took a matter of someone to go back there and sit down with this gentleman and let's find a solution. And that's all we did. It was a simple process, but I know sometimes simple may be revolutionary under this administration.
Good job.
A senior, oh, three, Councilman Wheeler and I met with CRI, whom is the auditing firm for the city of Harahan. What we found out was quite alarming. An entire audit was built around wrong budget figures that was provided by accountant Linda Lulu, the mayor, Tina Moselli, and city attorney Gilbert Bures. The audit will have to be redone at taxpayers' expense. Being a citizen of Harahan, the same as you, I would want you to consider to stand with me and demand an explanation. This is simply unacceptable. A senior executive, and I'll repeat what I said earlier, from Caldwell, Riglin, Ingram, and I quote, "This audit should have been very easy, it was the hardest audit I have done in my career in forty years." Then went on to say Linda Lulu's accounting process are completely out of line, and something needs to change. I remember, citizens stood up and asked this council not to take health insurance because it was a fifty percent raise. And at that time, that kind of, and that kind of raise was unheard of, that was the ground they stand on. Who got a fifty percent raise? My question is this, the accountant is paid three times more, somewhere around a two hundred percent raise, and a city attorney is getting somewhere around a hundred percent raise. Why are not these same citizens screaming at the top of their lungs by this gross overspending in the mayor's department? I didn't agree about the health insurance, but I complied. I am really scratching my head that no, not one person spoke up against, let me reread that, I'm sorry. I am really scratching my head that not one of the people who spoke up against the council receiving health insurance with a fifty percent increase has not spoken out against this extremely gross mismanagement of your tax dollars by the mayor and her staff.
I have.
Thank you.